I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, June 2nd, 2014. Time is seven oh three PM. The Reverend meeting of the Green County Council is Paul Gordon. Please come to question all to silence all that time. Please. Will Paul be in?
Wood.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
Daryl.
Here.
I have had an ass to approve and make if need. Are there any additions or corrections? Yes. If there is, then I'll entertain the motion to accept the measure. Those papers say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Yes, aye.
Oh. Blake, you're saying?
I did.
What's your opinion?
First thing in our own business, Harry Murray, City Mayor. Second reading orders 2014-5, amended 2013-1, further state the fees, files, temporary signs.
For those councilmen that worked here last month, this came to you with unanimous approval, recommendation from the Plan Commission. Basically, when we adopted our sign ordinance last year, it inadvertently left out the enforcement of the temporary signs. So, basically, I was asked, if we had started enforcing the temporary sign ordinance, or the fact that they're out there and proliferating everywhere, I was trying to give them, since the passage of the other one, the grace period that was allowing the old one, and then was no start enforcing it. And then, I looked at it, and there was no enforcement capability, or at least nothing that had any teeth to it to find somebody once they were identified they had, when there was a violation and needed to take down. So, basically, last month, I believe it was unanimous on first reading, but since two of you were absent, they, and the fact that there is an institution of a fine, which is just replacing the fine that was in the prior ordinance, as well as attorney's fees, if we had to go that far, then it was maybe a new fine, and we would do it at two separate meetings. And also give you, councilman, if you weren't there, the chance of my vote.
Last month, it was unanimous. Both three members of the present. I'm just looking for your own second reading. Any questions?
Have you had any comment in the public? Has anybody put anything negative?
Yes, gentlemen. If not, entertain the motion to vote in the second reading, orders 2014-5, amended 2013-1, orders, legal fees and fines, temporary signs. Any further discussion? Hearing now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's both same side. Motion passes. unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item is our own business. Last item, this is mine, on orders 2014-4, amended orders 2013-7, the mayor's secretary, job description and salary ordinance. And I'll try to make this as short as possible. I have heard some feedback on this position, and some has been negative. And I believe that's based on the residents and taxpayers of Greensburg, that it was their opinion. And councilmen can join any time you'd like to agree or disagree. Not having the full facts of what we're doing, statements being made like that we're adding another employee missing, or not. There's always been a secretary to the mayor for years, years, and years. This is not another job being added. This is updating the position at more responsibility level, more hours, things of that nature. I said, I want to reiterate, this is not another job. This is improving position with certain different situations on this. But due to the fact that I don't believe the people, and I've talked to a few of the councilmen as well, the people post them in a negative way, saying that they didn't think it'd be a new position, and it isn't a new position. It's updating the current position. And because last month, there was some concern, some language, I think best get to, not best counsel, but this, to withdraw or delay. But my plans are not to detour the improvement of the mayor's office. We want to continue to build and be more efficient, and more transparent to the taxpayers, assistants of Greensburg. There's a lot of things that we want to do with this position. I have filled the job, and I would, I don't want to call it mayor's secretary. That's still not particularly correct, up to date, and it will at least change it to administrative assistant, if that's possible. As opposed to that. I will continue to implement some of these, some of these improvements that we want to do. I think because of the financial end of it, I think it's wise to delay this until budget time to see, go ahead with personnel committee, and refine it even more. Just to lay a genuine, assertive stance, get things more, for what the council would like to see in this job, and define it more, make it more clear. I have hired someone to fill this position, and there have been a lot of changes been made over the last six months already. I think a lot of them are good changes and improvements, and I have to thank for that. So, the woman who's worked for her part-time pay, very little, and worked very hard and diligent, and earned a job, and I just, I will miss the bullying of us. She's been very helpful here, helping me this last six months. So, I commend her for that. But I would like to continue on. I want you to continue on to improve this job and transparency within the mayor's office and the other offices at this point. Such things as get this social network where we can let people know what's going on, simple things that people gonna get their trash picked up because of the holidays. They say they read the newspaper, they don't listen to the radio, and you don't look at the water that's looking for water as well. Everybody seems like has a cell phone, receives attached messages and things of that nature. A lot of different things we want to do here, and maybe it just isn't quite time. I say emphasize we need to educate about it more than what they have been, if they have a concern, let them know that yes, it was $7,000 worth of money. It was also 260 more hours a year on 30 hour work weeks to 35 hour work week. Was not giving the assistant the power to do the mayor's job. This all started out when Deputy Mayor was thrown out there. That's where everybody just thinks that they thought there's someone else who'll be doing the mayor's job. And that's not part of it. There's, like I said, occasionally, there's times that meetings overlap. That's happened this month, that happened last month. This month because of the holidays. Meeting have Monday fellow on Tuesday. Meeting fellow on Tuesday, still on Tuesday. So, we made them work. I couldn't attend all the meetings. And my main thing was, when you're invited someplace for a meeting, even though you're not on the board, you're not required to be there, people invite you for reasons, and if you find out what that reason is, and you can't be there because there are different levels of priority, you don't want to shortchange someone. When somebody asks me to be there, you'd like to at least discuss with them, and say you want to set some value in every place. And on many occasions, I've said, Blake, Terry, Daryl, you know, I've utilized the council pretty well, I think. But there's times the council can't be there, especially during the daytime, and there's people have jobs to work, they're out of town, what have you. So, I guess, councillor, I'd like your opinion here.
Well, procedurally, as with anything, you could see the motion table, second reading, to a future date, that's probably isn't far much of a procedure. You could also call the vote. You know, and if it's defeated, then it's done. Pretty much a new point, so it's through. Those are pretty much your only two options, like this.
Yeah, unanimous last month, I still think there's enough support for the changing of the job description. That can still happen. I will see why it has to happen tonight. You think it can be done later? I can with, another option is I can withdraw, or not.
Well, you can't really withdraw it because you already had a first reading. So, the ordinance is out there, it's passed, it's to the legislative portion of it. So, some action has to be taken.
So, it must be made in the second reading.
Just my thoughts on this, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, I, I think we should go through and, at least my opinion is, is we should vote this down at least, and then it's off the table, that we can come back with a fresh slate, a fresh start. Not voting it down because they're, because of failure to support it, but because we're going to redraft it, redo it, and then we'll be re-proposing it later at a later date, then we'll go through both readings. And that way, it's not just, it shows up on meeting, has a second reading, and it's done.
Well, and you, the other thing you mentioned, Mayor, is that if your intention is hopefully send this back to committee, and then essentially, you know, incorporate it into your salary discussions and your budgetary discussions, it may not ever come back in this format. It may simply, as part of your budgetary process, you can redefine that statute at that time, and craft the next salary ordinance for the next fiscal year. But legally, those are your, those are your two options, in my opinion.
To follow up on Counselor Kay, if we voted down, we can come back with something there, so it's not going to defeat, start over, start over fresh, correct?
Yeah, you're, you're essentially, yeah, it's, it's almost, yeah, you wiping the slate clean and starting over.
So, with the budget process coming up in July, August, it would probably be a good time to get the Personnel Committee together, to come up with a better language, what position I'm seeking, and bring that to the budget, to the budget. Oh, Personnel Committee, Justice Barrett, Worth, and Figurators, those are the questions.
Job description, will that appear?
Sure.
Could I have a question, maybe? And this is just a thought, is, we've already had our first reading on ordinance 2014-4, amending the ordinance 2013-7. We can still amend that and pass a second reading, right? And our amendment could be the simple fact that we amended back the original ordinance, or the original job description, only with the name change going from secretary to administrative assistant.
Yeah, it could, could it not be? You, technically, you could, but I will say that my, my opinion on that is that you will create a very messy record.
Okay, I, I would just, yeah, I, and that's the only thing we would have changed.
Really, is really a minor thing.
Right.
For all practical purposes, information that's been going out, the position has been identifying itself as administrative assistant, which is not what this is. So, it's not the same. Calling yourself administrative assistant as opposed to secretary is just a more modern, more contemporary way it's being described. So, I don't see any reason for us to worry about changing title to the formal job description. Until we change the formal job description, I don't think anybody's going to get too worried about whether or not one identifies itself as a secretary or as administrative assistant. If they do, well, they, I'll find something else for them to worry about, because that's really pretty, pretty minor thing to be really concerned about.
I think this too, I mean, you know, they own the email, they have this admin assistant, and I might see that kind of change, I don't see your problem with it.
I don't understand what necessity is if for the next three months, we're going to take a look at changing the job description. So, for the next, it's been that way for six months, or eight months, or 10 months, or maybe here. Janet may have had a call back a long time ago. I don't see any reason to, to do anything other than, as was recommended, vote this down now, wipe slate clean, and spreading away things that would have.
Do you want to change the email address to mayor's secretary?
No, I just said that. No.
Just to be clear, I, I, I support a more involved position. And, you know, in voting, if, if that's what we decide to do, to vote this down, I, I certainly want the assurance from the Personnel Committee that they will pursue this, and I think we need to get it done sooner than later. I, I, I agree, the budget time is time to look at the salary negotiations to be done, council, mayor, whatever, but I, I do want to see a more involved position there.
As part of the Personnel Committee, I will do my best to continue forward on moving closer to budget time. Counselor Kay, agree you stand on that?
I'm right here. I, I support this position absolutely, same with you, Mayor. I, I think we need to do something with this position to make it more well-considered.
So, I entertain the motion, then, I guess to...
I would, I would say just call the motion, or just call the vote on the passage of the ordinance.
2014-5, amended 2013-1.
2014-4.
So, so a yes would be approving it, or a no would be?
A no would be voting a den.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
2014-4, amended 2013-7. So, any further discussion? Harry's none? Or call the vote?
The, he is pleased.
Wood.
No.
Terry.
No.
Wood.
No.
Kay.
No.
Daryl.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Justice Committee made this call for you to vote. And also, while we're on this subject, everyone knows the new administrative assistant, I'd like to introduce her, Ms. Sarah Hamer. Of course, Sarah, today is her first day as a full-time person. The new business. Mr. Mark Copeland, EDC.
Good evening, everyone. Back in December, I promised that I would be here on a quarterly basis to give you an update as to what's going on in economic and community development. So, I'm here this evening. I hope that you've had a chance to look at what's in your packet as my overview, and if you care to follow along, please do, that might help you with any questions that you might have. In April, now, let me first mention that I did not come in April because I don't think we have about three commissioners, or two commissioners, council people that are going to be out that, that time, and the month before, I was out that month. So, it'll be on more quarterly basis, like, for this quarter, ideally, would have been that, that, or April, or stuff, April. But, I'm trying to keep it to that since it's new, and, and keep it on quarterly basis. Under the existing Business Services part of EDC, we had a job fair on April 17th that many of us thought was very successful. We had, excuse me, 349 job seekers there, talking about 150 jobs with 25 exhibitor employers at the job fair. And one of the reasons that it was responsible for us to have this job fair was that in 2013, DeCader County was the second fastest creator of jobs of all counties in Indiana. That was 1,190 jobs. So, I think everybody in this room should be, should be proud of that, and the work that they do to help create jobs. And you also see this continuing to go down, our unemployment rate. In April, it's at 5%. And in April of 2013, it was at 7.8%. So, we're doing something right. Moving ahead, on the International Material Handling Project, that is a transition company from what was custom conveyor to international material handling. That was Jim Stat, who was the owner, and he's retiring now, to his son, Tim Stat. Fine, fine company in our community, provided a nice petting zoo for, for kids, and was very good to the community itself. So, what we're helping international material handling with is the possibility of a low-interest loan for some insurance needs that they have with the company. They're still considering it, but we're there to help them if they do need that, if they need that offer to live. The Mesco Company, that was about the year that I started here. Ryan Messer and the Mesco Company, we went together, the city, and the county, and the Economic Development Corporation, to provide a low-interest loan, very similar to what we're offering from International Material Handling, to help this company start up. So, we're growing our own businesses here, able to do that, growing our own businesses. And he started out at about 25, and it was a couple of weeks ago now that we went before the county council at that time for a tax abatement on some new machinery that Mr. Messer has, and will add three more jobs. And at this point, from, from 25, three years ago, he's up to 37 now, working in the heart of the old Delta faucet building that was purchased by the Fog Family. Under new business development and attraction, Fusion Products, once again, we're starting to see a pattern, and it was very good. We, we had a new company in, in the community. It was ECS Fasteners, made nails. Nails for pallets, nails for fixing, affixing cloth, the cloth to seats in automobile. Now, a lot of these times, these particular kinds of nails were imported from China. We're glad to see they're being manufactured in the United States now. In fact, ECS Fasteners was so popular with its, its concept and its work of doing, of manufacturing nails, it had two offers to purchase in the first year of its operation. It was a situation where it had to take the second offer, because it was an excellent offer by Honda Industries of Indianapolis. They purchased that company, paid off the debt that we had in loaning them the money to start up, starting a new company, keeping the same people, but adding more. And you folks provided a nice tax abatement for them with their personal property, and now they'll be going from five to 15 employees for 2015, under the name of Fusion Products slash nice long nails. So, again, we're, at the term in economic development, is gardening, we're gardening, we're growing our own businesses. CNG Fuels, after Fusion Products, CNG Fuels came quite a bit out of our Auto Expo that we had last year, the Southern Indiana Automotive Expo. It's a compressed natural gas fueling station. Many of you probably have seen where it's being built. It's on 421, right across, very, very much across from Hampton Inn. So, there will be eight new jobs when they're finished and completed.
Is that in the city or is that in the county?
That is in the city. Interestingly, the next project that's on the list, IGS, CNG Services, also is a company that's looking to be a compressed natural gas servicing station. Now, that will be dependent upon them winning a contract with the parent company of One Solution Logistics, that provides the logistics services for Honda, facility that's actually attached to Honda, provides the parts on a timely basis for Honda, Honda's assembly. Finally, in the new business development and attraction area, is this JVI Solar, which is pronounced UV. It's a German-based company, and they're looking, they're looking out in the county right now, and it also depends upon a contract that they hope to have won with Duke Energy, and they've won a number of these around the country with them, to become a solar collector facility that would produce energy and sell that to Duke Energy. So, we have a number of alternate energy source companies that tend to be looking at us right now. And I'll jump one ahead and say, I hope that you will come to our EDC annual meeting, but we're having a person there as our featured speaker, who will be talking once again about compressed natural gas. That's Kelly Walsh from Indiana, Indiana Clean Cities Coalition. That annual meeting is next Thursday at noon. I hope you've received your invitation. If you haven't, it should be in your email, and feel free to come. Be a very good meal. You're gonna have to listen to my comments, so I think you'll enjoy it. And one more thing is the lineup in workforce development. You hear a lot about the needs in workforce development, the skills gap. Hear that? Constant. A new reorganization of the Workforce Investment Board here, which is called Southeast Indiana Workforce Investment Board. Economic and Community, the Economic Development Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce were asked to recommend two people from the private sector who would sit on that board, to let them know from the private sector standpoint, what are the training needs that companies in this area need. My thought was, in, in talking with people, and knowing, and in meeting Amy Bray from GCOM, the head of Human Resources there, that that would be a very good nomination for this newly reorganized SDIWI-V. There are a lot of federal monies involved with that that are funnelled through the state. We want to make sure that we get our share. So, the Chamber is nominating Laura Welber, and it's my understanding she will, she is being accepted as, as their nomination. And ECD has nominated Amy Bray, and she is being accepted as their nomination. And by that, those couple nominations, they will attend the meetings, they're bimonthly, I should say, once every other month, in the 10, they rotate around the 10 counties in Region Nine Services. So, I'd love to entertain any questions that you might have, or any suggestions.
Mike, that's not, and unless you can tell me in, you know, just a few words, I really do expect that you would have to research this, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I may know, but, anyway, so you could really send the information to us. The eleven hundred, approximately eleven hundred jobs that you mentioned, I'm curious to know the nature, the type of jobs, you know, where they're at, how they break down, cultural or wherever else, but the average pay is for them? I just, I would think I would like to know, to know that, and I think that'd be helpful.
True.
With regard to the Julie Solar, and again, the question is, is a, this is a brand-new kind of facility in terms of, I don't know whether it fits in, whether it's adaptable and fitable, should be, you guys would say in agricultural area, or if it can be, does it need to be an adaptability area? How is our zoning fit for this? Because that's a brand-new thing that I don't know that even talked about in terms of zoning. And again, that may be something that will require a little research.
On the UV project, that is looking in the county limits where there has been industrial site.
I would expect that, but I just don't, didn't know that. Do I also fit maybe someplace else that would disappear a little bit?
There are a number of these solar collector facilities, Councilman, that have contracted, they're essentially contracted developers, and they have contracted with Duke Energy all over their territories to build, and that would provide a lot of construction jobs, temporary, temporary construction jobs, a number of them to build and develop and turn that facility over to Duke Energy when they are complete. They feel pretty confident, they felt confident enough to have already made a offer to the landowner for the land that the facility will be developed on. The landowner's comfortable with the offer also. So it's a matter of winning the contract, and then we hope to see some good construction jobs here. And on the other question that you have, most of this kind of information comes from the Department of Workforce Development at the state, and I'll follow up into that, and we'll take a look at the nature of pay and so forth of the job. You're welcome.
Thanks, Mom. Very good presentation. Very forward. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. On the agenda, there's tax payments. Blake, Terry, you forgot that, but you remember on the GCOM conduct six dash one, we had a question, there was two under the same resolution number, and there was the one that has expired on the bill state, it's still current, so definitely there's questions and then answer, ask and answer. And then on deals, we have a question on that as well, one of those, and that's also the answer. This, this last year on one, one more year on the other, we want to confirm that with the county, and they just got off for those and death, and then today we got that answer. And those are the ones that have been signed by you, were waiting to confirm things, and that was on both GCOM two thousand six dash one resolution and the OLC, Resolution two thousand eight dash twenty-six, and Resolution two thousand nine dash seven.
To the last two, you said, are notes here supposed to be in the last year?
Yes.
In the buffer?
Yes, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah's, Sarah's on the phone today. And this is last year for both of them?
No, for one of them, and I would mean next year's.
It's last one, yeah. So I'm just a little bit wrong on that. There is another year last, but it wasn't.
Which one's got two years on?
Maybe two thousand nine.
F seven.
F seven.
Two years on.
One more year on that. Any questions, Council? Do you not have to entertain a motion to approve the rules on GCOM's two thousand six dash one and the OLC two thousand eight dash twenty-six, which was last year, that and two thousand nine dash seven? Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. And the next item, President John Billy of BoAC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm representing the airport board, just to give you a brief update. Some time ago, we assured you we'd be here once in a while to give you an update on the airport, and that's why I'm here today. The Greensburg Municipal Airport continues to be self-sufficient, covering its day-to-day operating expenses from our revenue stream, good revenue stream from our hangar rentals, from our fuel sales, allows us to pay these operating expenses, our airport manager, his assistant, liability insurance, upkeep, repairs, painting, mowing, just the general upkeep of the airport. We have installed a new Jet A Fuel System at the airport, which should be operational this Friday. All airports have offered two types of fuel, one hundred low lead fuel, which is used by most smaller aircraft, Jet A Fuel used not only by jets, but also by turbo craft and other high-performance aircraft, your prop dusters and such. Our old system was out of compliance, and we needed an updated system. It's got a triple filtration, something ability, the internal mixing system, but it fits all the, all the modern, all the contemporary requirements for such a system. Costs us a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the system itself. We've paid another, I don't know, twelve thousand dollars or so for the extras, you know, the concrete pad, the electrical and such to get this installed. But that'll be operational, we've been working on that for some time, that'll be operational this week, hopefully by Friday is our target. The runway itself was resurfaced about, about a year and a half ago, still in very good condition, and we do plan to resurface the taxiway and apron this, this year. The Greensburg Municipal Airport, it's part of the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, NIPUS for short, and therefore it's targeted for funding from the Federal Airport and Airway Trust Fund to bring the current runway up to standards of design, technology, and capacity. This trust fund, the airway trust fund are referred to, the funds from this nationally are gathered aviation tickets, aviation fuel fees, if you have a freight bill, something that's shipped by air, they have fees attached to those that generates this airway trust fund. Trust fund itself had over thirteen billion dollars of value starting in fiscal year two thousand fourteen. It was this trust fund, in fact, that enabled, that helped the city of Greensburg to purchase the airport from its private owners back in two thousand seven. Ninety percent of the project is funded by this federal trust fund, another five percent's paid by the state of Indiana matching, matching funds, the remaining five percent, of course, is our local share. The FAA's Great Lakes, Great Lakes District Office in Chicago is in charge of the program. It's a painstakingly slow process. The environmental assessment for this project began in two thousand eight. All the local field work that we did here was completed in short order. The final paperwork is at the, on the desk of the FAA in Chicago. They tell us it's near completion, but still not finished just yet. The FAA does not work with deadlines. We'd love to stand here and tell you that this project completed a certain date, or even a certain year. They do not work by deadlines, they work by a slow step-by-step procedure. Those procedures sometimes change as the game goes along, but we play along with it as it goes. We do work diligently behind the scenes to move the project along. Phone calls from Bill Ernstus, here on the board, our engineers, our board attorney, Don Trivett, we probably talk to the FAA in Chicago about, once a week, about the project. Back on January twenty-ninth this year, I personally went to Chicago and with some of the engineers spent the entire day at the FAA, working on details of the project. They tell us, the FAA tells us, it's a full green light for the project, but it's a very cumbersome and slow procedure, but we diligently, diligently try to keep prodding them all along. The board consists, of course, myself, Bill Ernstus, Jim Pruitt, Horace Reese, Don Whipple. We meet the fourth Monday of every month. Our agenda and minutes are posted on the city of Greensburg website, just like yours. We work for the airport, work for the mayor, work for you, the city council, and of course the citizens of Greensburg, and always each and, each and every member is always welcome you, any questions you have about the project or anything about the airport at all. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
Would there be anybody we could get a financial report to work here in the black?
Yes, financial report is generated every month at the meeting, and I'll get you a copy of the last one we had. And we work in black every month.
That's one of them.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you one. Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your diligence and your persistent.
Sure. And I'll start on reports from Police Department, Police Chief Stacy.
I turned in my report. I guess I'm just here in case you guys have any questions. I did twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, fourteen, and twenty fourteen, but obviously, yeah, there's nothing.
Information I thought was interesting.
Yeah, it was, excellent. The latest thing that came had a deadline to basically the training schedule.
Uh huh.
And I noticed, one question I had on the initial thing, we got back in March, I guess, was regarding the training in terms of what was mandatory or what was, maybe you tried to find a number of different types of training, and it looks like there are only, there are several, the mandatory topics are mandatory because U is chief, or city is, Greensburg is policy, or because that's part of standard best practices for police, what's?
The state requires those.
State requires.
Yeah.
In terms, and they require the human traffic too?
Yes.
Wow, cool, great.
Got the board.
Stacy, is there any, is there any way to, again, I appreciate you did a nice job summarizing it with the area of the detail here is, is fine, but is there any way that you could get this, instead of looking at it, comparing one to the other, you could give a spreadsheet that would allow us to look at two thousand twelve to first two thousand thirteen, not necessarily by month, but by year and then for different categories?
Uh huh.
And it kind of gives us a sense of seeing trends?
Okay.
And that, I think, would be helpful in the long term with regard to, as you build these reports, to see what kinds of things are, are happening, and it might, just gives a visual. And then, so with, with this report that you provided us, it looks like the total number of criminal crime, I don't know exactly how to categorize these reports, but for the total year, it went from fourteen thousand eight hundred to thirteen thousand eight hundred, so some crimes dropped, is that the good news?
Our calls for service have, I wouldn't say necessarily say crime has dropped, but our calls for service have dropped in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, but a lot of, our crime statistics show that the calls for service, I guess, were more substantial cases in twenty thirteen than they were in twenty twelve.
And, go ahead.
If I'm saying that correctly, but.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
The arrests and case reports or hires, or hires profile cases and bookings in twenty thirteen, I think to say low priority calls as well.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand, exactly. So, so that kind of brings it to a follow-up question then. And I understand that the way that you've got this laid out, you know, GPD eight hundred and a GPD RPTR, those are different types of radios, right?
Right.
Or calls.
Yeah, they are on the GPD computer.
Right. All right, and then, so radios and so, so those are all the kinds of calls. But you mentioned the, the number of arrests, the type, the kinds of arrests, and that sort of thing, is, is that something that can be shared?
I, in my report, I, I generalized, I did not get specific like the arrests, if you look at in twenty thirteen, I'm looking at twenty thirteen.
Right, yeah, I see it here.
Narcotics, we have eighty-eight arrests. I did not break that down.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Specific and, and sex crimes, and crimes against the children and.
If you could put those with twelve and thirteen in a chart that allows us to go compared year to year, that would be, that would be helpful. So, and, thank you for that. Another follow-up question, in terms of, I don't know, but I suspect that there's been a, each year there's been a request for additional manpower, so outside of additional manpower, what do you see as the long-term or short-term kinds of needs that we should be aware of? That the department has or, or it? The other thing I noted in here is in terms of your training, you utilize a lot of community kinds of things, is that, is that something that's relatively new, or has that been going on for a long time?
The community involvement.
Using, in terms of some of the training, I noticed there's new directions and others?
We try, yes, we try to utilize the local folks that are versed in different things to bring them in and teach the guys.
Yeah, Mike Asper knows, I just, the EMS people, just.
Right.
It's been something that's been.
We utilize like, a lot of our mandatory topics, we utilize local or county folks, fire department for hazmat, and Mike Asper usually does our SIDS training and new directions that he does, domestic violence, autism, we try to have a counselor and or, in the past we've had autistic children come in and kind of interact and farm.
Help us understand that.
Yes.
I have an unrelated question. On Lincoln Street, south of First Street, on halfway down, there is a real isolate, at least, I don't know, probably the traffic has it too, with regard to people parking between the sidewalk, along the sidewalk and the curb, or what curb is it? And it really has destroyed the turf, and kind of leads over to one place or another, and so one person's planted something, another person's now put a big obstacle on the, on the property line, so to speak. Is there anything that we can do about, I mean, is that, is that against the ordinance?
We currently have a city ordinance against parking between the. We currently have a city address against parking between the road and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's a parking violation, which the penalty's like ten dollars. Since I've been involved in the chief's position, it's not been enforced, people have.
They don't have a garage or parking.
So they, so they, a lot of people put like gravel there and make it a parking center. We have had, not necessarily in that area, but other areas of town, blocking the view if a person comes up to an intersection, and a vehicle parked between that area, they block the view, pulling out to different streets.
I think that the ordinance was put for a reason. I mean, I think there's a, partly because people, they pull in the wrong way, then they pull the town against, you know, pull out against the road. I guess ten dollars is, is, not that much, but if they got one every day, might, I don't know, this thing, I understand that the landlord has a problem, but that's a problem that they have to solve. And there's, there is an alley there, and there's, there's ways to work through that in my experience. I don't know what people got about it, maybe that.
If I, if I understand correctly, I know which area you're talking about, I do know there's, there is an alley there that runs east and west, but you have to, I believe, speaking currently, there's, you have to go through a yard to get to that residence which, behind it, if you want to park behind it.
Yeah, well, I know, and I just know that there's a parking spot in that alley, or whatever place, and I just don't know if landlords can come, maybe the same values bookers, and find some way to purchase a spot for that tenant on that side, so they wouldn't have to park, and then repair the, 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 the.
And always.